Meeting of the State Council Order six thirty P M Tuesday, February eleventh, two thousand and twenty five. Copy of the meeting's act posted on the back wall of the council chambers. The roll call, Sarah.
Here.
Reeve.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Tyler will be absent. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I am the president of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the Constitution of Justice.
Number two, approval of minutes from previous meetings.
I'm going to accept the January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five minutes as written.
Okay. Sarah. Reeve.
Aye.
Jody. Three claims and payroll, any discussion, questions on claims and payroll?
I'm going to accept claims and payroll as presented.
Okay.
Aye.
Sarah. Reeve.
Aye.
Jody. The four reports made or to be read?
All right, for this monthly meeting, um, we talked about the staff updates that were needed, which we have two additional updates since then. Um, the architects, uh, they were gonna have to come out presenting to you guys with all the awards, so we can all get on the same page. They will be presenting this evening. Nebraska State auditor signings, as you were aware, back in about June, uh, somebody provided an anonymous tip on some information of the manor, and so, um, they went ahead and did some checking on some different things. I've got the file back there, that's what they went through. Um, and then within that, they don't like some of the things that are within my contract. Uh, wasn't enough benchmarks to be able to support those things, uh, so we'll have to look at changes of that with the contract. They also did not agree with purchasing alcohol for resident use only for beer and pretzels on Friday afternoon. Um, they didn't, cannot purchase alcohol with, um, public funds. Uh, just keep in mind, though, we don't, we don't get any public funds, we're just city owned. Um, then they also did not like that we provide memorial plaques for residents. Uh, we always gave a memorial plaque or flower or something when a resident passed away. Um, they say we cannot utilize public funds to buy memorial plaques, so that's very starting to not be able to provide our sympathy in that matter. Um, a couple little sales tax things, um, in regards to different accounts that we didn't have sales tax set up with, so we accomplished all those things. We gotta get rid of the manor scholarship to provide to a, a high school senior that maybe has some interest to go into a healthcare field. We had to get rid of that. We had to get rid of manor gift cards and Christmas parties for a show of appreciation. We're not allowed to do that either. So, these are all things that have been going on for as many years as I know that has gone on. Um, I never knew that you couldn't do that with city sales tax funds. So, including the city has done some of the same things over the years, but they also know that they can't do that no longer. So, it'd be tough to go ahead and try to promote with our facility, how to come here compared to other facilities now. Uh, longevity policy was reviewed, it is allowed to do a longevity policy, so it was within the packet, um, and offered to give out, uh, at the last table. So, that was completed. The minister's contract of renewal was, uh, discussed, but not finalized. Uh, assisted living Medicaid survey results, every year we get surveyed for assisted living on Medicaid, and that was sufficiently free. Let's audit the report, um, you all have your packet in front of you, if you want to take time to review and look at it and ask questions. It's the same three types were looked at every year. We're a small business, so we try to delegate different duties out of who's looking at it, including the board of directors, including the city council to look at those things. There's always adjustments, about three adjustments per year, um, that's a standard adjustment made. Um, so really no concerns, sure, Medicaid does an awesome job of making sure that that audit is what they need, and that was completed on time. We are looking at a couple changes of board meetings dates, the one in May will move to the Wednesday prior, and the December one went to the Monday prior to the meeting.
Questions for Julie? Thanks, Julie. Please, Chief, question?
Sorry, quick one. So, as you can see, we're having numbers in front of you, not that many to report. Um, seven traffic stops, three citations, we had a couple death calls, um, you guys don't remember who that was in the community. I will tell you that, um, we had three nuisance properties that we served last month. One we had to redo, which was keel, which he has been served again, and is aware of the keel process, so we'll have to start that again. Um, Cherry's cleaning up slowly, but she's getting her property cleaned up. Andrew, who was at third one? Jenkins, King Jenkins, if you're not familiar with that property on South King, drive by and take a look at it, because you did a really good job on that. I mean, it's like even Bob said, that it probably contains property in town now, because they really did a great job. Um, we do have four more nuisance properties with Kyle right now, it's King Street. Um, all but one of them is King, three oh one, two thirteen, two eleven, South King, and then Ellsworth. I served two zoning, um, violation notices to Susan Henderson and Tim Roland. Then you have some, you have people living in their garage, and you cannot do that because there's not a steward system. So, they've been served, working on getting those people out of the garage. Um, we had one dog call last month, nothing came of that. Um, I will let you know that April tenth, we are having an active shooter tabletop training at the fire hall with New York County. I'm gonna invite some state patrol guys to show up. It's gonna be Bobby Reiser, which is the manager of the school, hospitals, the, the, uh, private school. I will get you guys to see that fire, so you guys can take a look at it. There are a couple members in the community that I'm going to invite as well, they're private military, and I think their input on, pray to God, nothing like that ever happens. But if it does, if you guys have somebody that's in the community that's not active in law enforcement or, you know, fire department, anything like that, um, there. I'm sending funds into training at the academy in March and May for firearms instructor. First one's gonna be handgun, second's gonna be patrol rifle. Last, last year, um, I had a really hard time getting an instructor from the county to get me out on the range to get qualified. And I have to be, I have to be qualified by December thirty first at midnight, and he, I couldn't get out until December twenty fifth. And that sucked because it was twenty-five degrees, and it was really like five below, and, um, so with Andrew being certified, we can actually invite other departments to come up and do some other training outside of just what we need for qualifications, so. I will let you guys know what that entails probably next month, because that march is coming up, so. I don't have anything else, if you guys have any questions for me, yes.
Another question, Chris, on the East End property.
Yes.
Does he know that he's been re-served and the appeal starts over?
Yep.
Okay, believe, or anything yet, haven't we?
No, not, I haven't, I know that he's been in the office, so.
Just wanted to know.
And I guess when he got served, he was real, real compliant, didn't have anything to say, didn't cause stomp his feet, nothing, so that scares me, makes something's up.
Have a question.
Yes.
You got your audit done?
What audit?
A couple months ago, you said you had to do an audit.
No, they, I'm not, I'm not accredited, so they, I didn't have to do it.
Oh, well, you never have to, well, that's all right.
And what they look at for the audit for law enforcement is just their continuing hours, which we never have a follow-up. They, they do full reports, um, yeah, they might ask for five, uh, I'll just give you an example, like five criminal mischiefs, maybe a couple domestic violence, just to make sure that we're including everything, we're getting, that the warning is correct, time and fashion, so. They told me, they told me that I didn't have to do it, because I'm not a part of it, so.
Okay, well, someday, Julie.
I don't know if I want to be, if I'm gonna do it.
Abby, are you still working personnel policies yet?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Thank you, Christie.
Welcome.
Economic development report, you have anything?
Nothing really new from last month. IRP is pretty much finished up, all the loans are out now, and still working with new business expansion, so they're giving us some stuff to, so I can help them with loans and, and whatnot. Other than that, nothing, nothing new this month from last month, so.
City superintendent report.
Most things did this last month, was obviously our biggest one was our water leak grab here. Uh, we took the truck down for the pump to get fixed on, and we did a good job, so. Knock on wood, no other leaks apart.
Yeah, sounds good. City attorney, Tyler, you guys ready right now?
I think, uh, my contribution's still there, so pass over me for now.
Okay, sounds good.
Bob, can I add something, I forgot? Our office is coming along on day one, stuff is here, but, um, they're gonna start hanging drywall this week, Thursday, so it's getting closer. Getting closer to it, so, happy to talk about it.
Okay, discussion, presentation of possible manner, renovation addition, C M B A architects and Clark and Anderson Architects. C M B A, are you first?
Yep, yep, sure will.
Some handouts that we're gonna do. Kind of talks about the team that we're putting together.
Thanks.
On the front side, we talks about our team, any assistance needed to raise money, then we have examples of some projects we did on the backside.
Good job. Thank you.
And I thought you were requesting all the information, uh, they put their patch of code in the preliminary information.
Sure.
You're welcome. Can I get everybody?
Uh, we'll just start off with the, remember that same A R tech we've been running for sixty years? We've had six different offices, the closest ones to you are Omaha, Sioux City, and Grand Island. Uh, we do primarily, uh, forty to fifty percent of work we do is healthcare related, so hospitals, clinics, long-term care, and April Health. Another forty to fifty percent of what we do is education, and the rest is municipal industrial, all those types of things that go with it. Uh, so a lot of what we do is, is exactly this type of work. Uh, we have been up, we did visit with Julie a little bit, um, we've taken a look at your facility. They do have some issues and some things that have to be addressed. Um, you've also got some interesting situations that you'd have to deal with in order to do some of the things.
Now, that's a surprise.
Exactly, um, you've got, you've got plenty of property, you've just got elevation changes. Everything wants to be on one level, which would be nice, but you've got no need to put anything in the basement, and we'd have to have either bring in dirt or have a basement. So, that's just one of the things that we'd want to take a look at, as to how we make that usable space, and something that, that's gonna be beneficial for you all, um, that's moving forward. Um, so some of the things in what we've proposed to do upfront here is that we would, uh, turn around and do a, we'd do a vision session with you all, another listening session. We send out a questionnaire that usually gets the law enforcement dreams documented, and then from there, we usually have about three or four follow-up in-person sessions, uh, that we're gonna sit down with the, the organization and the files, and kind of come up with that, what that master plan is. What is, what do you need for the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, and kind of look at phasing and how that sort of works. To those, we will put together an idea of probable cost, and we'll have some renderings of what it was possibly gonna look like. And that's what we've proposed to do upfront here for you. Um, please do, if the, the project were to go forward, in there we did include what our fees would be based upon a range of what the project cost would be, since we don't have an idea of what that is at this point in time. Uh, but as I've said, on, on your placement in front of you, we, you do have a team of, of very qualified folks that are gonna be assembled to help you out here. Uh, we do everything from, uh, the architectural planning, interior design, we bring on consultants for mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and structural work. We do have, dependent upon what you would need for money, uh, if you'd be looking at U S D A funds, we're very well aware of going out and how that works, uh, and what that means, and what sort of work is provided on your end and ours in order to do some of that stuff. So, that, that's really the upfront services that we're looking to provide, if you've got questions, we're more than happy to answer them. Uh, we've also got, I didn't bring enough books, but we've got some books, um, some healthcare pictures of other projects that we've done as well. So, questions that you all might have.
Where's the ballpark for money? Ten million, why?
Depends what all you're looking to do, I mean, for, for Julie that you're looking at there, um, it's probably gonna be in that range somewhere, in that ballpark, yes. Uh, depending upon whether you would want to, uh, get a construction manager on board, uh, and who that might be, or if you decide to go bid build, design bid build. We can work on that. Outfront, we definitely want to engage a contractor of some sort to verify our numbers, so that we're close to conservative for you.
On a project like this size, do we have to have a, a construction company, or can someone in plane do this with your guidance?
Not knowing exactly what all qualifications you've got in town, we, we could take a look at that. Um, what the larger construction company is gonna have the ability to do, especially on something that starts up at ten million dollars, is to be, be able to bond that type of work, uh, to be able to get subs in, in some of that stuff. So, most likely, you're gonna need a little bit larger contractor, but there's various scales of contractor. And it doesn't necessarily mean that we can't, it shuts out the local folks. We can still leave a preference in there for them and their abilities. It just depends how we structure the project.
Do you think building a separate building for the laundry, for the walkway, is more financially effective than putting in all that dirt?
If you were gonna do, if you were gonna go that far to a separate building, I would rather just say, why don't we take the assisted living part and move that all across and, and a little bit lower, and work that direction as opposed to breaking off just laundry or something like that. Because then you're getting all of the res, same residents, you're getting it same level.
So, that whole assisted living would be on that level?
Yes, so then you're, you're, you're still keeping your communities. Does that mean that you may have to double up some staff? Yes, that's, that's the issue going that direction.
Julie, don't they have their own staff anyway?
No, just on the day and the evening, shift from medication aids, but the laundry is shared, housekeeping's shared, dietary is shared.
I mean, assisted living has their own staff?
No.
No? Okay.
Overnight, right now, the alarms sound down there on the nursing home side, and the nursing home side is the one who goes in and utilizes that light. So, having it completely separate defeats the whole purpose of what we're trying to bring that laundry upstairs, and they could throw a load of laundry in and things like that, not saying that a walkway wouldn't work yet.
I'm just looking at costs.
And, and that's where I, I still would like to take a look at the, the ability to put in an elevator.
Can you come up with a plan for that, we haven't heard one yet? It's a brick short, literally.
I mean, there's always the possibility, yes, it's some extra dollars, but do we split something out, do we have a long walkway? What are the other things that, that's gonna encumber that, and how much does that cost, that's all things we want to take a look at.
Maybe Elon Musk will help us. You don't think so?
You guys, we never got to see your brochures, so we're kinda, we didn't get to see them, can you guys email that out to me? Like, I can forward to all the councils and stuff?
Yeah.
Of like, projects you've done, I know, it's like we talked about our dent center deal, you guys, you showed us like, other, other things.
It's gonna be this year, or we can send that out.
You would've got the letter of agreement in the previous packet, not this one, but the one month before, you would've seen that?
And then Julie, did you happen to see, was this with your packet that you received?
No.
Okay.
I just had to look.
Okay, we'll include this as well.
Okay.
Something's decided to be done and saying they, you're the ones that are critical kind of money upfront, and we'll take the evidence.
Uh, upfront, like I say, it, it's a whole spout out in our letter agreement. If we nothing upfront, it'll all be done as we do the work.
Questions?
Okay, an architect different, do you do architect first, we pay for that, and then you start building, if you're a pitcher?
Correct.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you for having us. And because of the weather, we're gonna have to stick around, we're gonna take time out.
That is. Did you have any trouble somewhere?
Thank you.
Um, no.
I think it's light, so.
Close to snow.
No.
Yeah, you know, it's just outside of central city, but like, you have one of that.
Yep.
This is all we have, but we'll get those sent out to you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Because then it would, it would make more sense of what they're talking about.
I didn't get this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're getting one.
You too, be careful.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi there. Are you from Lincoln? Oh, did you drive up today? In the snow, yeah, it wasn't so bad, these are going north now, it's out.
Never saw much snow until we got it fast north. Is a piece of snow.
It's cold, that's it. Oh, that's not nice, man.
Watching cartoons maybe more.
Are we good?
Yeah.
All right, uh, thank you for the opportunity to come present. We're with Clark and Anderson, um, bit of an agenda, so introductions, we'll do a bit of a firm overview, so you, and you know who we are, some experience, some process, talk about your project, and then, and, why else? Uh, so my name is Tim Rip, I'm an architect, uh, I've been with the firm for thirty-two years now. Senior principal with the firm, uh, director of architecture and our construction administration group.
And I'm Stacy Stahler, I'm an interior designer, got eighteen years of experience, ten here for the firm. And we're not the team, but we're just the team that serves.
So, Clark and Anderson, um, we're on our seventy-ninth year, uh, the firm was founded by an architect and a landscape architect who went to Harvard together, one moved to Lincoln, and he must have bribed his buddy to come live in Lincoln from back east. So, um, we've always been a multidisciplinary firm, um, we've got pushing up two hundred people, depending on if you count interns as real people or not, and kind of have them come and go, but, um, unlike a lot of firms, we're full service, so we have, and we have this on another slide, the architecture, interiors, um, polyengineering disciplines, landscape, master planning, energy modeling, um, and we have experience in healthcare and just general practice work. So, this is more about discipline, so again, architecture, interior architecture, landscape architecture, civil engineering, mechanical, electrical, structural, uh, digital experience, design, we design sound systems, monitors, presentation, uh, interior, or setups, uh, community engagement, we have commissioning, energy modeling, and then construction administration. Um, really, we can do project kind of the entire thing, we don't do site to graphic surveys, and we don't do geotechnical engineering for a project like yours. Just a slide of where we work, um, so we've got seven offices, Lincoln, Omaha, Fort Collins, Kansas City, Missouri, and at Lawrence, Kansas, and then we've got, uh, first in South Carolina and one in Oregon. We're, we're trying to fill the entire United States, those are the states that we've worked in, we're trying to become licensed in every state. We have a, a science and tech group that pretty much goes nationally, they, they got a project at UC Davis in California and Cornell in New York, a week apart for studies for that diagnostic lab, so the sciences are kind of in our blood as well.
So, I'll talk a little bit about experience, we have broad healthcare experience, and I, I decided to take Great Plains Health as an example, and just to kind of expand on that client, in particular, we've, we're on our one hundred and twenty-sixth project with them, so that speaks to, again, like, just the depth and breadth, and we've done all things in the healthcare market, so whether that's broad experience like hospitals, you know, smaller experience like clinics, that could be, you know, just a few rooms to sixty or seventy rooms, or independent living, assisted living, memory care, kind of the whole spectrum of the aging adult, um, we've got experience in all of those. So, I've slipped in a few projects that I want to briefly give you an overview of. This is a current one that we're working on for Villa Regina Motherhouse, and it's probably the most similar in size and scope to what you guys are working on, um, right now. So, this is an addition that we're building on to, um, what is essentially a, a aging home for nuns in the Catholic Church, and we're building on some private rooms, some hospice rooms, um, and really thinking about the aging adult and the, the needs that they have when they're also serving their own community. Another kind of similar one is a senior living project we did for Manuel Cleaver, this one's down in Kansas City. So, this was leaning more towards the independent living side of the spectrum, but here we really worked to target the community to make sure that they were able to access, um, some affordable housing and low-income tax credits, um, also worked with them a lot to get utilities to the site. Um, also worked with them a lot to get utilities to the site and keep the construction costs down. On the other end of the spectrum is a project that we did for a developer, this one, um, is still in concept, but trying to add all the possible amenities into senior living to attract people into the spectrum of care when they are still, um, you know, young and agile. But be able to care for them all the way through to memory care. Center Point is another project that we worked on in Lincoln, which is kind of a, a unique beast in the fact that this facility does a lot of things. There's a medical clinic, a behavioral health clinic, a pharmacy, but the upper two floors are actually housing, and they are trauma-informed housing. So it's for people who are coming with a, um, you know, alcohol or drug addiction, may have gone through trauma, who have a really hard time living on their own. So, we designed, um, there's sixteen different units on each floor, various levels of acuity. But we wanted to give them a little bit of autonomy and a little bit of control in really modest-sized apartments that they could live in as they age, as they have different, um, disabilities and things. A lot of the clients that they have, um, are actually, it's interesting, people who have an injury who end up getting addicted to, you know, narcotics or different drugs, and it becomes a cyclical cycle. So Center Point is a place where they can live with the structure and boundaries that they need. It also had a ton of amenity spaces, and we were able to integrate a, a really specifically designed garden. Um, we used different things like fractal geometry and wayfinding, knowing that this population doesn't read signs, they want to know where they are based on placemaking. So then we'll talk a little bit about our process, you wanna? Okay, uh, so basically our process, um, we, we have discover, design, deliver, right, is the three major categories. But within discover, we're always going to look at a project under the lenses of who it is, where it is, and what the program is. Um, and so, you know, we've made some assumptions and, and thought about some things you might want, but if we were to be awarding this project, we really do start back and think, okay, what is this specific community need? What, what can we do with the built environment? Um, and, and how does a normal process work? So, you know, right now, we're kind of in the, the gray dot area of the RFP, RFQ, but a normal process for us would have stakeholder engagement, really within programming. SD stands for schematic design, DD is design development, CD is construction documents. Sprinkled within here, we will have owner meetings and internal meetings, because we're full service, um, we always want to touch base with you and coordinate with each other in between those meetings, so that we can be really efficient in kind of awarding this. And then, you know, depending on what type of construction delivery method you choose, if it goes out to bid, um, or construction administration, that's really where our team makes sure that the contractor is delivering the, the project in the same way that we specify it. Um, another thing that we do that's an interesting part of our process, when it comes to healthcare, it always looks for sources of relevant evidence. So healthcare, as you know, has been changing, and is constantly changing, and as architects and designers, we make a lot of assumptions, and we hear from things, what people, what people want. But it's really good to look at research and look at evidence, so the Center for Health Design, um, is one place that we look for a lot of things. So they have really helpful tools for, you know, situations like yours, where we might not have thought about, you know, having amber-colored lighting in the, the bathroom, and how that can help uh, care delivery, you know, during the evenings, when you don't want to turn all the lights on if you're assisting someone. Um, so there's a lot of little things like that, thinking about infection control in a post-pandemic world, um, and that the evidence, the body of evidence for healthcare is really increasing, so that's something that we're constantly looking at. In addition, we have, um, several of us, like I'm an EDAC certification, which basically means we know how to read research studies and we can interpret them. Um, so there's a, a whole list of guidelines if we wanted to research your project. Most people just take the, uh, the evidence and make a decision, but it is interesting when we do, it's a kind of post-occupancy study, and see, did our assumptions, you know, make sense? Um, at Center Point, their new clinic design increased their profitability significantly, it enabled them to deliver care more efficiently. And so we have that, those data points, which is. So then, we'll talk about your project.
So, it was early December, December tenth or something, um, Stacy and myself and one of our mechanical designers, Adam Kent, came in, that was Julian, we um, obviously walked around the site, got a feel for, um, your existing conditions, um, the next slide, just my notes on kind of discussion items that were brought up about not only the, the assisted living facility, but also, um, the, the construction that has taken place over the years. So from that, the, the key points that really, uh, came to us, or the direction we heard were adding eight private rooms, separating the living and sleeping areas, providing more power, kitchenette, larger windows. The assisted living part of the building really doesn't have a large enough dining facility, so if we can, uh, increase that, getting our first floor laundry in the building. Access to the, the storage they have on the lower level, um, for assist the staff. Uh, and then possibly a new bath house on the west end of the building. Uh, the graphic is a topographic, um, export that our civil engineers started. So the location where the building, or the addition, was kind of discussed, is about nine to ten feet below your main floor level. If we bring in dirt, that's a lot of dirt, so. So this, this looks at, uh, the eight-room addition, we can zoom in a little bit, but we also know that as we go through a design, we need to be aware of all the applicable codes, whether it's healthcare guides, or, uh, National Fire Protection Agency, or the International Building Code, we're versed in all of those codes.
So this is kind of a zoom in, again, of our assumptions, we would never say you have to do this exactly, but this would be a very simple way to add on to, to your building. Which is a little hard to see here, maybe let's see if I can zoom in in just a bit. So having eight rooms kind of jut out, um, along the kind of left side of the plan, also relocating laundry on first floor, we noticed that your staff was carrying laundry baskets up and down the stairs. I don't like doing that in my own house, I wouldn't want to do that at work, so, uh, I think that would be a really, you know, simple and easy centralized spot to, to relocate laundry. As well as dining, potential space for a bath house, and an elevator could tuck kind of nicely into, um, kind of that corner of the building, giving you access to, whether you decided to build a basement under this or not, in both scenarios, I think this is a logical spot for an elevator. Um, and then relocating kind of what is your existing dining into maybe a nurse and a family rec area to get some utilization of that, um, space in the corner. We also took a look at, um, what a good module would be, so, you know, we kind of, in our design process, we look at the big picture, and then we look at the little picture. And that's, this is my favorite part, is the interior designers to get into the, the nitty-gritty of what size of room and suite are you going to offer? And so, we just, you know, threw out a couple thought starters of a three hundred and twenty-five square foot module. Your existing facility has spaces that range between two fifty and three thirty, so, um, you know, leaning on the slightly larger end, giving a little space for a kitchenette. But having some sort of divider, whether it's a partition or a shelf, or something that would separate the sleeping space from the living space, um, you know, might be a, a nice thing to have.
And then, um, when we, we had sent these images to Julian back in December, I, I just kind of broke down our base assumptions. So the floor plan we had drawn was six thousand nine hundred and twenty-three square feet, um, with the grade across the site, there is an opportunity for a basement at a relatively, uh, low cost. One, uh, cost estimating, uh, product that we use is RS means, it's a national database of cost profiles for different building types, I looked up. Uh, assisted living, they, they suggested, uh, the construction cost would be in the three hundred and fifty dollar range, so I just rounded to seven thousand square foot and put in the base construction cost for three twenty-five, three fifty, three seventy-five. You guys aren't terribly remote, there are some good contractors in the area, so whether we can, uh, execute the project for in that three seventy-five to four hundred range would be, I guess, our initial opinion. Um, if we took the same seven thousand square foot at a hundred and fifty a square foot and put a basement under it, you'd get seven thousand square foot of building for another million dollars. So that's construction cost, to get the project cost, we typically would assume twenty percent. It, it really depends on how much equipment you're gonna buy, if we're buying all-new beds, for instance, or all-new, um, furniture for the dining area. That FFE cost is gonna go up and down. But we'll need to get a site topo survey, survey, a geotechnical investigation, those can each be in the twelve, thirteen thousand dollar range by the time we're done. We would assume, uh, AE fees, uh, are, or all-in cost would be in the eight, eight and a half or something, if we're a project in this location. And then Julian asked if we would break out an initial phase, so conceptual design, schematic design, refining the plan we have is probably in the twenty-five thousand dollar range, and that would go towards our total fee if we go to the next phase. Little wire firm, um, again, our team, um, having all disciplines in house really helps with coordination. We don't need to call the schedule a meeting with a structural engineer or a mechanical engineer when we walk across the room and have a conversation with them. Dedicated staff throughout the project, I'll be the project executive, project manager, um, you'll see me at the crowd break. And the dedication for that. Senior leadership commitment, um, I'm a senior principal in the firm, there are seven of us, so, um, I'm very dedicated to my project, I guess. Our process, uh, we listen, we all come in with, uh, preconceived notions, we did take a shot at, uh, the design option, but we're working on another clinic in Lincoln right now, we're on option ten, I think. We have pretty thick skin, if there's a change you want to make, it's your building, I'll make the change. Utilize live design, we can bring the model, and if you want to move something around, we can do that live in a meeting, just to do test bits. We're flexible, um, again, strong partnerships, and what kind of outcomes are, are goal for every project. I guess we're back, we've talked too much, any questions?
So if you were to ballpark it, how much would you say it's gonna cost? We saw the other slide, but if you were to ballpark it altogether, what would you say?
If you do the basement, it's probably in that three and a half to four million range, would be my gut feel at this point. I, I haven't calculated the quantity, but, I mean, if you figure, the building footprint, seven thousand square feet, if we triple that, just to get slope off, and so that's, call it twenty thousand square foot grade, ten foot tall, that's two hundred thousand cubic feet of dirt divided by seven, that's to get to a cubic yard, that, that's a lot of dirt. Even if you just do a crawl space under it and do a suspended floor, it would be less expensive. Bringing in that much soil, unless you have a local earthwork contractor that has a bunch of dirt, but he wants to get rid of a lot of dirt.
We don't have much dirt around here.
Could also look at different, um, you know, we have another clinic, uh, that we're working on that is, there's a lower level that's accessible on the site, and they're looking at doing outpatient services on the first floor and leasing it out to a tenant, so.
Your existing building has a lot of storage, it's just a level down, so it's hard to get to. So you either have to drive things around, or go up that little skinny stair, so making full use of a, an elevator's gonna cost half a million dollars by, probably by the time you're done, but if you can gain access to that much more square footage.
What about garage space?
Garage.
Garage.
Yeah, if you could put parking under there, we just have to fire separate it.
So when you add this on, would you do any possible repairs to the present building, like any of the sewer pipes and stuff like that that might not take the addition?
We talked about, um, heating in the existing rooms, or in the existing restrooms, that was an issue, yeah, we'll, we'll look at the entire facility, or as much of the facility as you want us to look at. Making sure that we get an understanding of what's on the fire marshal's list, is always important when you go into a renovation, so you don't design to what you want, and then he comes in and says, well, that's great, but here's my list, so. You have to do this to do that. We need to make sure we understand the requirements in the code official when we go into renovations.
Yeah, and that varies.
A facility like this or a school, that usually gets, catches school up.
And I'm just verifying that you said that we can hire our contractor that's in Plainview or around Plainview, correct?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and if you wanted to partner with them in the beginning, or bid it competitively, we'd work both ways.
My brother wants a crate, and this is big for him, but, yeah.
And you've done work for the facility before, right?
We were recommended by, um, Denny Dewar, who was a previous architect, I've worked with him a bunch, so. Any other questions or things we can, if you have any money for us? We can help with fundraising images. That we've done a bunch.
Yeah, if you need community engagement, we can help with that kind of stuff, if you need to run a bond, we do community support for a lot of projects. Figuring, or explaining the need to the community is usually the biggest thing, if you're on this board.
It's just for those that are.
Sounds like you know what you're doing.
Those that are here, it's taking, and just leaving assisted living and making them rooms a little bit bigger and better, but taking the older part of the assisted living that was a nursing home and making those into private rooms. So we're kind of hitting two birds with one stone, we're making assisted living nicer, but we're making more private rooms on the nursing home side.
Will there be a lot of renovation in the current rooms?
Assisted living, none.
Yep.
Mm-mm. And then we would take, because of our not adding any licensure to bed, we would just kind of go onto the nursing home side in the last four rooms. On each one of them, I would just take a bed out, and it would be as fancy maybe as something else, but we would have different stepping stones, but they all have private bathrooms already attached, not showers, but private bathrooms.
Well, and it would be really common in a project like this as well, for us to sort of establish, um, kind of design standards, you know, one of the things we noticed in your rooms was that the floors, the sheet vinyl was kind of slippery. So like, we might recommend a rubber floor that has a better, um, it's called a dynamic coefficient of friction, it's how slippery a floor gets. And as you turn over a room between patients, what a great time to just switch out the flooring, you know?
Yeah, so we need to figure out why you have thresholds on all the interior doors, too, that people have to do a whole lot.
Nineteen sixty-eight.
Yeah. No, that was two thousand, when they built the assisted living.
Oh.
There are thresholds in every one of the assisted living rooms, not on the nursing home side.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Any trip hazard like that is kind of a liability.
Put a sweep on the door easier than having to trip over a threshold every day.
Yeah, but so, yeah, we've looked. Yeah, so yeah, we've looked at all the details like that before. Yeah, give me other questions, Julian knows how to get a hold of us. Yeah, absolutely.
Do you think discussion annual whether you thought running people?
Same, we go see.
Yes, we will.
Then we have a chance to read our report. Do we have any questions or comments in busy?
Questions for Dawn?
I'd invite you to do the Valentine's at school, so that's a spot up before Valentine's Day.
Do you have any questions, Dawn?
How's your new children's revering?
Good.
I can attest to that, I got to do the preschool visit with my grandson, and they had so much fun.
Okay.
Kids are enjoying.
Good, awesome, thank you.
Discussion ordinance number one zero zero six, legal ordinance.
So we get these every year, just everything that's gone through the legislature, but basically applies to municipalities. I gave Kyle a look through, just to see which ones apply to us, don't apply to us, you don't have to adopt them, most of them you should, probably should, because it's a law now that you don't follow, but we won't do a formal ordinance probably till next month, but I know Kyle wanted to touch on any of them that we don't need, or if we need all of them. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're all updates based on state law, so might as well. At code section, I can afford for the same.
So we'll just do a formal ordinance next month to adopt it, so.
Sounds good. Number eight, discussion action approval to advertise for bids to Hay Lagoon and Transfer Station.
This, we put this out every year, this for the hay metal and the farm rent.
I make a motion to put out bids to advert, I'm sorry, to advertise for bids to Hay Lagoon and Transfer Station for twenty twenty-five.
Sarah? Green? Number nine, discussion action resolution number seven one five, authorized sale of real estate two 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 East Locust.
Okay, so Kyle made an ordinance and, or sort of a resolution, thank you. And if the date works out, so if we put in the paper for three weeks and then wait thirty days for remonstrates come in, we could do it April eighth, which is actually our meeting, our council meeting day, so we, so I sold it there, you could have filings that night, so April eighth at one thirty, you're already clear with the library, so if you guys want to sell the house or if you wanna keep it, do whatever you want with it, but.
What do you want us to say?
I want you to say whatever you want, but it's a resolution, if you wanna sell the brown house that we have from Capes.
We don't want that brown house.
Nope.
We do not want it.
So we wanna make a motion to sell the real estate at two 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 East Locust. Is that what we're doing?
We approve the resolution.
I want to approve the reservation, number seven one five, Kyle?
Before you do that, I just put in a placeholder for the date, so I can actually have someone move to amend resolutions. To include the date in section one, and then once you get out that amendment, then to approve the resolution.
Okay.
So I didn't know what you wanted me to say.
So I need to make an amendment to resolution seven one five in section one to amend the date to April eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
I'll second.
Sarah?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Now I need to make an appo, a motion to approve resolution seven one five to authorize the sale of real estate at two 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 East Locust.
Sarah? Green?
Aye.
Jordan?
Number ten, discussion action, accept warranty deed from Jeff Ratliff in satisfaction of abatement, unsafe building charges against property.
Okay, so this was the building we tore down on the property of Locust where Rose and Jeff live. They were making payments, we put on a payment plan, we talked about it, obviously they had some personal things happen and separated everything, they're no longer making those payments, and they said if we just wanna take it off their hands, we sure can, they have no way of paying for it. They have five thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty cents left, so if you guys so choose to accept that, I would go talk to Jeff and he would sign it over. That's the route you wanna take. Or I suppose we could put a lien on the property, which will never, whenever it's sold, never paid, will be.
I already told my neighbors I could buy it.
Oh, yeah. So the minute we own this, can we go in and tear that little shed down on the back?
Once we own it, we can do everyone.
There's two of them in there, shed and garage.
There's a garage. There's a garage with sheds.
There's a fuel tank on there, yeah, the only thing he asked is he'd like some time to empty it out, and he has, that was like two months ago, so it'll be empty.
Yeah, two years. I'll give you two days, today and tomorrow. All right. I make a motion to accept a warranty deed from Jeff Ratliff in satisfaction of the abatement on safe building charges against the property.
A second.
Sarah?
Aye.
Green? Jordan?
Aye.
Okay, number eleven, discussion action, motion to waive interest for LV eight forty loan to Jay's place in consideration of cancellation of the loan.
Okay, so we did, you guys approved an LV eight forty loan for Jay's place for ice cream machine back in November. Wanda came to me last month, she never purchased the ice cream machine. She gave me the check back, I physically have the check. I talked to Kyle about it, he gave, said she could pay the interest that was due, or you guys could just waive that in consideration of the loan just basically being null and void, so.
So she never cashed the check, or she cashed it and gave it back?
Nope, I physically have the check, I voided out, so. She's fine with paying the interest that's due, she just didn't care, but she literally did not cash the check.
How much is it? Like twelve dollars?
Twenty-two fifty.
I make a motion to waive the interest for LV eight forty loan to Jay's place in consideration of the cancellation of the loan.
Second.
Sarah?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordan?
She did tell me to thank you guys for giving her a loan, and she was sorry that it didn't work out for her.
We're all gonna miss some ice cream.
Yes.
Number twelve, discussion action, motion to approve or reject settlement agreement in plain view versus Hart. Where the subject real estate will be listed for sale with the realtor and the city would be reimbursed twenty-four thousand dollars, nine hundred seventy, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-three cents from the proceeds of the sale in exchange for the dismissal of his lawsuit and the release of his trustee.
So as the folks know, we got a trustee for promissory note with an agreement to use it as for primary residence, which obviously there's a lawsuit filed, cause the city didn't believe that she was residing there. And this was an offer that I received from opposing counsel, which would basically be to settle based on the principal amount of that note, so it wouldn't include any interest or court costs and five feet feet, so it's your, probably in the range of about two hundred bucks. So that's for your guys' consideration, whether you wanna approve or reject that settlement offer.
How much is the interest?
Well, it's one percent per month, but it didn't start until we provided the notice of the default, which was February first, so.
But if we didn't, cause we'd go to court then, we'd pay attorney fees and go through, possibly lose or go years of adrenaline out stuff.
Wasting years of Kyle's time.
So she's gonna sell the house, right, that's what, she'll sell the house?
She'll pay off our principal. House for sale, we'll get paid the principal now with the loan.
Where will she ever live?
I make a motion to approve the settlement agreement in plain view versus Hart. Where she will list it for sale and we will be reimbursed twenty-four thousand, nine seventy-three sixty-three.
Second.
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 Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Thirteen, discussion evaluation of manner administrator job performance added two six twenty twenty-five. We could move that to the end. And you want to have a closed session, Julian?
Sure.
Okay, move that to the end. Number fourteen, discussion action ordinance number one zero zero seven, approval to abolish manner board added two ten twenty twenty-five. Any discussion?
The manner board answers to you, Bob, correct, you're, you are, they answer to you.
We're actually answer to you.
To the council?
Yeah.
I would add that the manner has, manner board has done a good job in trying to do their job. I think that they are heartfelt group of people that want to do the best for all the persons and situations involved. I think it's been very, very hard to make a clear cut decision on many things, and there's some other things coming up, I think would be even more difficult for them. Therefore, to relieve them of stress and frustration, we would not have a manner board, however, we would always accept their considerations when we're going through this, and then that would therefore make the council responsible.
Can I ask, have you approached the manner board and discussed the problems that you foresee?
And gotten no answer from the board?
You have?
But no.
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 No, that has not happened.
Not exactly, no.
No.
Oh, no, I thought we had a four hour session the other night.
That was contract related, that was, it didn't have anything to do with anything upcoming or.
Yeah, it's just contract discussion.
Can I ask, what seems to be the problem, what is the problem that, why do you wanna do this? What's the problem? Cause we'd like to know.
Having come in on the tail end of this, I would say that there's been situations that haven't got a clear solution, problem solving solution to, that have continued to develop.
And what, what is that, what's the problem?
The staff has no respect, I don't think, for Julian, I think it's her job extremely difficult. They have no respect for the supervisors that are there. Right now, there is absolutely no control over the younger employees that you have at the manner.
I wonder why we didn't know about this. I, none of us have, we didn't know that there wasn't any control over the younger ones. We've, we've talked to, we've done surveys, and the, most of those surveys have been very good against Julian.
I think deep down, we, we know that there is some issues that still aren't getting resolved, and we've tried to work on them. And I think that's what it's stemmed down to, like maybe if we had the interning at the meetings, like for say if the council would to take, be the one to take over, there would be no question, the attorney would always be here, you know, for the rights and the wrongs to say either you can do this in a meeting or you can't, just so it's cut and dry maybe.
But we're not talking about a meeting, we're talking about the staff and the minister.
You're not, many employees, you're not, many employees up there.
Well, right, there's a lot wanting to quit, I think.
But they have.
Well, they have, two of them have, two of our big officers have.
Two companies, fifty plus.
When, when I was on the board, it happened every month that was somebody quitting. I was on it for twelve years, every month.
This is, this is where our leadership is leaving, which is.
But the leadership has left before. I mean, that, that has happened before, we, we had somebody leave a couple of years ago. I mean, it happens, people retire, people get tired, people. I mean, I'm sorry, but this, if you guys lose this, you might as well forget the pharmacy, there's gonna be a lot of things in town that go under if you lose this. I mean, Julian has been here for twenty-two years, twenty-three years.
But what are we losing, Joe? We're not losing Julian, we're just losing the actual manner board, and then the city council would be taking over our position.
And you want her to be fired, that's the whole thing, so if you do that.
No.
We never said that, Joe.
So the council, you've, you've all got time to attend the manner meeting, and when there's a problem, you can, you can go up there and you can help solve the problem, you're all gonna be up there.
No, she wouldn't answer to us anymore.
No, I'm saying, she's gonna call the council, and she's gonna say, hey, the cook didn't come today, which one of you is gonna come?
We're asking the board. Or the laundry didn't come, I went down and folded.
That's why you hire administrator to make those problems go away.
How are they gonna go away?
That's why you hire administrator to do that, problem solving situation.
Okay, you add, you, okay, since COVID, people, we, we have advertised, 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 there's advertisements in every paper. We've got, you've got a whole list of, of people that have closed. Today, just today, we found out that Laurel, the lady has been there for three to four years, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars she makes, and they're in debt. Another town is a million dollars in debt, Julian has done a wonderful job, we are not in debt, we have money, we have people that, yeah, maybe they're complaining, I've worked at a place where people complain, people quit, I mean, that happens. I just don't get it, and like you said, like, like Vicki said, are you guys gonna wanna go up there? When, when the cook couldn't show up, who, who went and cooked? Julian did. There isn't anybody, we, when Vicki was on the board, Julian asked the rest, the people that worked there, she said, when you guys don't have anything going on, could you go and clean the wheelchairs? Never got done, never got done. They don't do it, she can, you can, you can talk their ear off, you guys can try to talk their ears, so.
So you're talking about dissolving the board, we are not talking of, that's what we're talking about, is dissolving the board. That's the administrator's job to put forth doing the, telling the people to do what they're supposed to be doing. And they should know what they're supposed to be doing.
Yes, they should, but that doesn't mean they do it, that doesn't mean they do it.
Okay, but we're, right now, we're talking just about dissolving the board, cause we have had many discussions and
I feel it's.
The people that work there.
I feel it's too bad that you didn't include the board, that we've got these serious problems, and let them see if they could address these problems.
I have a question for you, so the, the board, has it been like the last twenty years that nobody's brought you guys problems, the people that work there? Has it been problem, problematic for you for that twenty years, now do you really believe that that's the truth?
I believe that, I, I do believe that, and I like your point, I do believe that, I think we have some new people on the board, which have tried to make some positive changes. A lot of green, you could agree, of some of the point engagement survey that we, we did, you know, we've, we've been trying to make some positive changes. I will say that Julian is amazing, and we're very, very, very lucky to have her up there. Does there need to be some, some more positivity on her part and employees' part? Absolutely. I think, and I'm gonna say this because if you abolish the board, it doesn't matter anyways, I think it's a couple of the board members that are the actual issue. I've tried to bring to light some of the changes that really do need to happen. Kinda gets washed under the rug. We made pretty good strides for a while there, once the, the surveys came back, and we went through the surveys, and I have those right here, if you want them, they're all yours. Yeah, I, I guess, I, I think that's the issue.
Basically, if we abolish the manner board, which is what we are talking about right now, Julian's job has nothing to do with what this discussion is at this moment, okay?
Yeah.
I'm not talking about it right now, done with that. The manner board, Julian would come here every month and she would answer to us, that is what we are discussing right now. now, okay? Because right now, she answers to the manner board, and the manner board helps make her decisions, am I not correct? Okay. So she would come, and we would be the ones that would help her make the decisions as a council. All of us have to be willing to step up and do what the manner board has been doing for the last how many years? I have no problem with helping Julian with those things, but this manner board has gone above and beyond to help out of that manner. They go up there, and they help with staff development days, they help when somebody needs to do laundry, they help when somebody needs to help serve residents food. I do not have time out of my day to help with those things. So if we're abolishing the manner board, we are doing away with a service to of the elderly of our community. Now, are we all willing to do that? Because I am not. Am I willing to work with the manner board and the people that are on the manner board right now to help solve some of the issues that are gone going on at the manner? Yes, because until two days ago, I had no idea that any of this was coming to light, and I am not thrilled about it. And I'm sorry, I might seem like I'm raising my voice, I'm not. I just talk so everybody can hear me, because that seems to be a problem, that people say I talk loudly. I apologize, I'm passionate.
I appreciate it.
You can hear it. So I'm just, I'm just saying, like, I appreciate everything that goes on up at that manner. I have family at that manner. I have family members up there, and I appreciate everything that goes on up there, everything the manner board does. They do extra things for the residents, they do extra things for the staff, they go out of their way, every single one of you. And I know Kim Wilkin is not available to be here tonight, she's out of line in state, but I talked to her earlier today. You guys are amazing group of people that we approved as council members, all of us, approved for these people to be on the manner board. So if we don't think they're doing their job as a board, that's on us, because we went with Bob's recommendation. So you have to stop, and you have to think about that. It's a hard decision to make.
I will ask the board right now, if you had a, three CNAs sitting at the desk with their phones, and a supervisor comes by and says, we need to get some work done, and they absolutely sit there, continue on their phone, and act like she has no authority, what would you do in that situation?
Let me tell you, you can't fire them, because you can't hire anybody.
And you know what? That is a threatening, toxic atmosphere, and that's what we're talking about. And if someone says, you can't fire me, I say, there's the door, and unfortunately, the way you solve that is that Julian would have to transfer people out, so you have a staff deracial that's currently available for the number of patients you have, residents you have, and that would not be good, that would not be good.
No, wouldn't be.
But right now, this younger staff, and we heard this how many times today, they have no respect for Julian, they have no respect for their supervisors, they don't... Now, do I think the patients are taken care of? I absolutely do. There is no smell in that manner, it looks nice, everything on paper is done, but your staff is in serious, serious problems.
Here's here's also an issue. Each one of those staff is an employee of the city of Plainview, correct?
But as long as there's a board, it's under the board.
Okay. Julian, who's your board president? Kim? All right. If we're having problems with staff, maybe we need to have the board come up, maybe the board needs to be the ones that writes the the letter that goes in their folder, and tells and demands from our staff that we do better. If Jeremy has a city worker that's not doing their job, they get a letter in their folder, three strikes, you're out, right? Am I right?
I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
You're not even listening.
I'm writing down.
It's written.
Three strikes, you're out.
We have all that. But here's an incident that just happened on Friday. So on Friday, I got myself and Pam both trying to get out early, because we've been there long enough. We get a call from one of the employees, day charge, that is supposed to be working Saturday and Sunday. The doctor eventually gets on the phone with us and basically saying she's not gonna be able to get to her phone, so he's letting us know that she's not gonna be in this weekend. We already had, for the night shift, I already hired a temp agency for the weekend type thing, and so by looking in there, trying to rob Peter to pay Paul to figure out how we're gonna get this all covered, uh, one of the temp agencies canceled on for Sunday. So there was, so now at this time, we have zero staff for all day Sunday and all Sunday night. You do the best you can, we, it's happened today, I just had two people hired last Friday, and two people aren't showing up now already. It's, you cannot believe what the healthcare world is doing right now. And if you would just come into the office and see it, the struggles that are, yeah, I could fire every single person up there, I really could. The cellphones drive me nuts, because I'm old school, but I got my board members, and my city council still texts me. I told you, I don't listen to my phone, because I wanna be like them, I wanna actually to work, type thing. There isn't help out there, they ain't the line of people out there waiting for a job anymore. So if you want the place to close, you're gonna let it close, because there's, you've gotta take the good with the bad with the staff. You have some that are exceptional and some aren't. They're not lined up anywhere. I'm looking at getting another temp right now, coming in from Louisiana. I had a temp over there that worked on Wednesday night, pulled in Thursday, worked Thursday from two to six, she did get sick. I will say, she flew in and she got sick. I talked to her Friday, she looked bad, so I said, let's keep you away from the residents. She worked Saturday, seven to seven, Sunday did not work, worked Monday, threw a fit, because we talked to her about, like, can you put your iPad away and put your phone away? You know, can we work? Pam had talked to her a few minutes later, I see on the camera, now she's sitting in a recliner at the nurse's station. Um, can you find something to do? Like, you know, we could feed residents, give them off-road fluids, just do some one-on-ones at this time. Got up, well, I'm gonna go do so-and-so here in a little bit, well, that will be great, but can you do that? And uh, she's no longer there. I mean, it's just crazy right now.
Can I just say something? Being on the board for almost two years, I just feel maybe the city council would be better if you guys did take it over, you guys have a better oversight, I mean, you're having appointed people run a multimillion-dollar budget, where we, half of us don't even know the open meeting act law. That's a huge flag right there, because there was stuff going on that was illegal. And we're still having the same problems with staffing that we can't get a handle on, we've tried for the last how many months, and it's just, I feel nothing's gonna change with some of the board members that we have on there, and it would be nice for, if when Julian comes to always have an attorney, you know, on site, for things to get approved or denied. I think it would just be best, in my opinion, if the city council were to take over.
I guess I feel that if you don't wanna be on the board, then you let them appoint somebody else.
Well, Joe, it would be nice if there was changes happening. I mean, we've had a lot of employee issues that, like, I wish you would speak up in the meetings like you are now, but you don't, you just sit there.
I just sit there.
That's, yeah.
I just sit there, uh-huh. I made a mo, I made motions, I...
But I mean, when it comes to discussion, I mean...
Ladies, ladies, hold on a minute.
One thing that might expedite, um, the discussion of this tonight is, um, it it seemed to me, based on your comments, that you, uh, uh, probably wouldn't be in favor of this particular, uh, ordinance, and given that it requires a three-force vote of the council in order to, uh, pass something without having read on three consecutive, uh, meetings, that maybe a a good resolution of this matter would be, if if it doesn't appear that there'll be a a three-force vote to waive through agreements, um, to have this considered at the next, uh, city council meeting.
Well, that's another thing, I think Tyler should be here, he...
He has been informed.
Well, that's that's fine, but he's not here, so...
I, can I, can I say something? You guys know I'm very big on informing people of things. I got this yesterday. That's not fair to the public, they didn't know this was, they didn't have a chance to look at it, because it wasn't in the packet online. The council got an email to them yesterday. I am a big, big person that you do not wait till last minute on issues like this, to bring it before the public or the council. And you guys have known that from me for eight years. You work for the city, you work for the public, you need to keep them informed. We don't do last-minute things. And that's my soapbox for right now. I understand, I don't know where it's all coming from, I don't have a say in it, but I am not a last-minute person, and every person that knows me knows that is my thing. You don't put things like this on people last minute, because there may have been a public that wanted to be here that wanted to speak about this. They had no idea this was coming today. I emailed all the council, but I didn't email six hundred people in town and tell them that this was on the agenda for tonight. So I was a little shocked, this showed up yesterday. I know I don't have any say in this, but you know my feelings on last-minute things added to the agenda. So I'm with Kyle that it should maybe set until next month. Um, and my feeling on the manner board, if there's issues, change what their powers are, don't just abolish them. The the boards that we have, Handy Van, they make recommendations, they don't make it, they don't sign checks, they don't do that, they make recommendations to the council. The only board in town we have that has any say in anything is the library board, and that's because they are commissioned by the library commission of the state. Every other board we have in town is a recommendation to the council. Why is that not just the manner board? If you're if you're not happy with what their powers are, change their powers, don't just get rid of them. Take away, take away their check-signing powers, take away those things. That's fine, but I think they need to be there. I'm I'm with the manner board being there, because it is easier for Julian to talk to them than for Julian to come here in forty-five minutes, talk to you guys about issues she's having at the manner. We have enough things going on with the city. Julian comes to us for things that she needs help with, but they're there to be for her, to make recommendations to you on things they would like to happen at that facility. And that's my take on it. I I don't think getting rid of the board is the answer. I think there could be changes to what their powers are. If you're having issues with people on the board, change them. They're an appointment by the mayor. They don't have to stay there forever. If you wanna get rid of somebody, ask if they would like to leave, or when it's their terms up, you put somebody else on there. That's just how that goes. And that's just, sorry, that's my, that's my spiel for tonight, but...
It's okay.
I'm, I was very not happy that this came yesterday, for you guys to vote on this tonight, um, when nobody really knew that this was happening. When you say nobody, you mean the board? Um, the council didn't get it till yesterday. So they didn't really, I, in my opinion, I don't know if you guys had time to review it. So, I mean, and it's not just you, this is a public thing too. So the public really was not informed that this was happening tonight. I don't have a dog in the fight either, but I'll tell you what, if I were a member on the manner board, and I got a day's notice that it was about to be abolished, and I wasn't even told, I wouldn't probably known until after it was gone, I probably would be upset.
But some of us didn't even get in, I I called this Kim this afternoon and asked her, what time was the meeting today? All we knew was that the guys were gonna be here for the contract. She talked to Bob, he said, we're dissolving, there's a thing about dissolving. I had a half a day's notice. Kim didn't even know, she's the board president. And personally, I think part of this is, we have a couple on the board that don't like it, that Julian's making what she's making, and I think that's the whole subject. And I guess if you guys want to consider that, and you want to get somebody that you're gonna pay not very much for, you won't have a manner.
I would just like to say, I've been going to the manner board meetings the last two years, and I don't think I've missed too many, and I have seen a lot of improvements made by the manner board. There's a lot of tough decisions to make all the time, and from what I've seen the last six months, a lot of stress on the manner board, but everyone has handled it really well, and everybody shows up, keeps putting in their time, their ideas. And the fact of the matter is, we, I'm not talking about now, we have issues at the manner we need to work out, but there are no issues we can't overcome. There are not. People make them out to be a big deal, but they're not. If you bother to take the time to find the facts, both sides of issues, what's being portrayed is not what's happening. And I for one, I like to get both sides of every, every issue. Julian knows that, something happens, we talk. I wanna know what she, what happened, I wanna know what happened with her. The fact of the matter is, there's there's policies not being followed at the manner by the employees, that puts Julian in a bad position, because she's caught in the middle, which, you know, we have issues we gotta work on. Karina and I, right now, are in the process of talking to the manner employees, and I wish we'd have done this a long time ago, but we're gonna get the feel of the manner employees, because they're the ones that tell us what's going on. We tell them to be honest, we tell them to be truthful, tell us whatever they want, because it's not going any further. And that's the only way you really get a feel for what's happening. You have a lot of people talking about the same thing, then you know you got a problem. Or if you gotta let people talk about a good thing, and you got, you know, you got some good stuff going on, but it's not all doom and gloom, and my honest opinion is, and I've talked to Karina about it, that Julian is getting railroaded. That's my honest opinion, and it needs to stop.
I think what you said, Bob, you know, just like at our last meeting, when those three employees came in, and they talked to us, and they talked to Julian, and things have changed with those employees, and they didn't realize, and I agree with you, yes. If if you sit down and talk...
They're not, there's, there's agreements policy at the manner that's not even being used. It's, one person goes to another person, and then that person tells twenty other people, and Julian says, what? What happened? Well, then all of a sudden, she's the bad guy. You know, she didn't listen, she didn't do this, she didn't do that. Well, there's two sides to every story.
And if you got an employee that gets recommended, do you really think that that employee is not gonna baden up the person that just did the recommending, I'm just saying, like, and I'm gonna say this, I gotta go, that's okay, I'm assuming you guys are gonna go into executive session, but Julian called me up to talk to me, probably a couple weeks ago, about a situation, my professional opinion, what I would do in this situation. And I'm, I'm gonna leave you guys with this, and then I'm gonna go, because like I said, I don't have a dog in the fight. I I I will attend more manner boards if we move forward to have a manner, because I went to one, and I thought, oh, okay, not bad. Um, small room, I think more people would come if it were in a bigger room, if you have a bigger room, but, um, I didn't know Julian, I don't remember if it was two years ago, can't remember, I didn't, I didn't know her on a personal level. Um, I I try to get Angela to attend a lot of the sporting events at the high school, to put ourselves out there, to let the kids know, hey, look, we're, we're here to support you. Julian showed up with this man, and he was pretty old, I'd have to say nineties maybe, I'm not sure, but he was, he had some onset dementia, I think, going on, and his grandson was playing for the opposing team. And Julian brought him, and I'm assuming with the approval of his family members, took him down to the game so he could watch his grandson play. Now, if that were my parents, and I were out of town, I couldn't do that, that would mean a lot to me, right? So out of all the gloom and doom, like Bob said, I think there's some really great things happening up there. And, you know, employees suck right now, and I can say that, because they're not gonna listen to you, or that that generation or that that age, they just don't think that they have to listen to authority. So she's in a tough precarious situation. But I agree with you, I think there's some mailrunning going on, and I don't think that's fair. That's just my opinion, she has my support, I've told her that, and I think she's doing a great job, um, with my conversations that I've had with her, I've left her with nothing but respect. So with that being said, I'm off my soapbox. I think what Courtney said about the being notified yesterday of this, I think that's kind of unfair and, uh, very unprofessional, I think. So, um, I'm gonna get out of here, you guys have a good rest of your night, I'm not feeling real great.
Don't sneeze.
Huh?
Do not sneeze.
I already did on my elbow, so, um, yeah, good luck the rest of the night, and I'll see you guys later.
Okay, so table, why?
With that being said, yes, I'd like to table, one zero zero seven, you can come next, please.
Sarah?
Green.
Hi.
Okay, fifteen, discussion action and recommendations to manner board regarding administrator contract negotiations.
I agree, I'd like to table the recommendations to manner board regarding administrator contact, contract negotiations and job performance.
Second.
Sarah?
Green.
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Okay, council comments? Any more comments?
Sorry, I'm very passionate, everybody. I apologize.
Nothing wrong with that. Seventeen, public comments. Any more public comments?
Well, um, I, I'm, I work at the manor part-time during the week, and, um, I, I, I'm not entirely sure, but I believe I'm the youngest one there. I answer directly to Julian. I, I respect her. I, I do whatever she tells me to do. If I don't understand what I'm, what she asks me to do, I'll ask questions. And, uh, whenever there's.
Can you talk to those girls that are holding their phones?
I, I, I don't know, I don't know who they are, but I can try.
That would be nice. Your pressure is always good.
Yeah. But, um, whenever there's like a rule change or anything regarding phones or, or like how we're supposed to do stuff, as soon as I know what I'm supposed to do or what the change has been, I, I will, I will do my best to follow that. So.
Thank you, thank you. Awesome. We appreciate that.
I, I just, I wanna stick to the, I wanna stick to the rules as much as I can.
Can you do some work out there?
Yeah.
Can I just say, he, he volunteered, just, just to put a plug in for him. He volunteered for a whole year. He would come up after school every day and volunteer. Didn't get paid, and now he works there. Very good.
And he's got nice parents, too.
Yes.
Anyone else like to comment?
I would. Julian, I've said this at meetings hundreds of times. I know you give a thousand percent, and your heart is truly into your job. It's just, my feeling is, it's the board internally. We need to be on the same page. And that's really hard, because there are some board members that have been on there for a long time. And that's the way you guys have always done things, so I think it's hard to just, with the new board members taking in their ideas, I think that's where we're struggling.
I would agree.
I am most upset about the lack of respect for Julian and the supervisors up there. That's what I'm really upset about.
I agree, and I don't know what you do. I don't, I don't know what you do about it.
No, we'll have to figure it out.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's.
And the manor ha- the manor board has.
Well, she can't, she or the supervisors can't do anything if they give them no respect, if they do not follow the directions. So, if anybody comes up with a good plan for that, please let us know, because it's serious up there.
Could you dock, could you, is it legal to dock their pay, any, if they don't follow the rules?
I mean, like, put their.
Yeah, we're talking about some stuff.
You invite them to discuss.
No, but it's, they get issues.
Retroactively.
You can't do it that way.
But, Vicky, that is a pertinent thing. There is no consequence to not doing what you're told.
Right.
So, as far as you should come up with what consequences are.
It's hard to come up with the consequences.
It is. It is.
Tracy, did you have something?
Well, I, I feel I'm maybe one of the newest board members. I don't know. I come from a different point of view, and I'm not always at the board meetings, which I think kinda keeps me quiet often. And I just, like, came here because I missed the last meeting, and I thought that would be a good way to maybe learn something about what's going on on the board, since I'm not part of it. And found out two seconds ago, you know, when we started this whole thing, that I may not have a board to be part of. For me, coming from the nonprofit world, coming from mental health, coming from where I come from, I have different viewpoints. But I'm not going to beat anybody over the head with them until I know that I know what the layout of the land is. And I feel like throughout the whole time that I've been part of the board, I'm still trying to figure out what the lay of the land is. And still not entirely sure, but it seems very bumpy. And whatever the decision is, I mean, obviously, I will apply it. I mean, heck, I didn't know that we had the rights to write checks or any of that stuff. Whatever our, I mean, maybe I need some remedial.
It's certain people on the check, on the signature card, though.
Yeah, you have board members on it.
Not every board member signs them, just to clarify that.
Okay. Well, because I, I mean, from my point of view, I'm a CFO of a foster care agency. I deal with all this kinda stuff. And so I have those viewpoints. I'm always comparing what we do with the manor to what I know of my audits and my whatever. And so I'm always trying to guess. But what I would like to just say is, I agree that there is some things that we need to work through. I think that there needs to be a heck of a lot of listening and willing to see different points. I mean, things fly through there, and I think we need a lot more discussion before we just sort of zoom, zoom, zoom through. And so I, I like the idea that you're tabling and doing some more thoughts versus in the midst of everybody having lots of passion. Not the passion's bad, but more, just to be able to hear out and figure out what's the best move or plan you may make.
One of the reasons we're sitting here with no contract for Julian is because the board tabled it. So, some, uh, recommendations could be added to our contract of things to work on. We all have things to work on.
Mm-hmm.
But, and, and honestly, I just wanna leave things the way they are for now. Not clean to contract, but until Karina and I talk, and I personally like to talk to every employee. Because today alone was I over it.
It was.
In a good way. In a really good way.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I mean, so, you know, I, I would just want to finish up doing all the employees, and then we could come back with some recommendations, because there's nothing there that's impossible to solve. Absolutely not.
True.
Work to be done.
One of the things we talked about was, I was, we spent seven thousand dollars from the community college to teach them leadership skills. Most of them couldn't remember what they were taught. Do you have a book? Somewhere, it might be in the pickup. You know, so efforts have been made, but no follow-through, so.
Things work on.
Yep, things work on.
Absolutely. It's been a two-year project so far, for me. It probably goes beyond that, but.
Well, and it's not just the contract needed updating, because it hadn't been updated for god knows how long. I was gonna go to the city office and look at them, just.
It was updated one year ago.
Get a historical thing, sense, um, of, you know.
I add, that's what I recommended to add, that verbiage in there for that working package.
Yeah, that was lost.
Oh, that one.
Otherwise, that was. But that's it, yeah. The other stuff, as far as the survey results and that kinda stuff, maybe explained out, you know, in a bit more detail. Like, that's just, you know, meat anyways, you know, like, it's a lot to consider, you know? Um, and it's not, and I know that weighs heavy on Julian every year with surveys, but, you know, you also have employees that hope that those great survey results. Um, so, and being an employee of the manor and the assisted living in years past, you know, I, I think it's important that that's all spelled out in case it is questioned. I asked Julian to put together a, uh, list of all the survey results in the last year. So, when we recommended, um, as the board recommended, what we thought her, um, raise should be, um, she had that listed and that backing that we also backed, especially the survey results, if there were any questions of why we chose that amount. We didn't get that far, but I just, and there needs to be policy updates there. And I've tried, I mentioned the grievance policy. I've tried to recommend updating that several times at board meetings with, um, some naysaying, um, exit reviews. Um, I've, I've got my, my to-do list right here if y'all wanna. But it's not a lot of trying, um, on anybody's part.
Have you tried, have you tried to help update it, though? I mean, have you updated it and taken it to Julian?
Um, well, the grievance one, yeah, we needed to talk about that, and that came up.
But it's mostly, you know, the board too, kinda going through it, and she has enough on her plate.
Yeah.
The policy actually, should actually go through the attorney, I would presume, to just kinda oversee that and make sure the verbiage is correct, I would assume.
Right. Yeah.
But I just wondered if you had written one up and then recommended it, and you could take it to the county attorney and Julian could look at it.
Um, yeah, we were starting to get to some of those policies, um, the contract. Um, we did make some suggestions about, but I don't know that Kyle was ever talked to about it. Um, because there's also bylaws that need to be updated, and there's also, um, a job description, I think. I can't remember for sure. But anyhow, and, and, updated in a good way, just brought to.
But this is the stuff that we need to know about. If the manor board is having issues and you need help, you need to come to us.
No, it's.
Come to.
The contract stuff was.
Right, but I'm saying, like, if there's problems, come, come to a meeting. Come to the city council meeting. Put it on the agenda. We can talk about it. Don't fight amongst yourselves. It doesn't do anybody any good, then we sit here and we get nowhere. We need to be able to continue running the manor to the best of its ability, and right now, we are all trying very hard to do that. We are one of the best manners in the United States, and I would love to keep it that way. I mean, we're held up here, and that's where we should stay. I don't wanna be down here, because everybody's fighting and nobody can get along. Everybody needs to talk. So, if you guys are having issues, if you're having problems, and it's not getting solved amongst the five or four or whatever of you, please come to a meeting and let us know. I mean, these are open meetings. It's public comment. You're public. Get on the agenda. Preferably before twenty-four hours before the meeting, so that everybody can be involved. That's all I'm asking. So that we can all have an open discussion with everyone, and hopefully we can get some of these things resolved. So that we can continue to be up here.
The mayor's at every meeting.
Correct.
And he sees some of the conflict that goes on.
Correct. So.
So, he, he, he's aware.
Correct, but I don't have time to go to the meetings. I'm, I have a business I have to run. The time of the meeting is not conducive for me to be there. My apologies for that.
Not really conducive for us.
So, if you guys have stuff, please, come to, you, I'm at Mary's. The whole board can come see me at Mary's at one time. I don't care. Just, just come to us, so that we know what's going on. That's the same with any board in town, any person in town. We are all elected officials here. We're elected by the people of this town. And it is our job to listen to you and come to these meetings and go to Jeremy and go to Bob and tell them what you're feeling. And get all, get these solved. I have people come to me at Mary's all the time and complain about something, or tell me that Jeremy's guys are doing a great job, or the road needs to be graded more, or whatever. But as a small community, we're not gonna solve any problems by being at each other's throats. That's not gonna work. We have to work together, and that's all I'm asking. From all of my board members, Bob, Jeremy, all of you, just please, come to us, so that we can solve these. Because I wanna continue. That's why I'm here. That's why I'm on the city council, because I want our community to be great. I don't, I don't wanna be the armpit of Pierce County. I wanna be the best community we can be. That's why I'm here. I don't have an agenda. So, anybody, please, come talk to us. The, we're getting stuff solved tonight. I don't know if you guys think we're getting anything solved. We're, we're trying, and that's all we can do, right?
The only way you're gonna do this, talk about it, so.
And personally, when, you know, when one of them said that, when they came and, and joined, and they're just listening. Vicky knows when I first joined, I was not in agreement with it, with everything. It took me a couple years to understand what she does, what happens up there. I'm up there a lot, because of being a preacher. So, I see all that she does, and I just think, you can't, you can't be on a board and expect to come, walk in and wanna change everything all of a sudden. Everybody needs to work together. And like, like you said, if we have a problem, yeah, then come to the board, come to your council meeting. And, and say, you know, I think there's a problem. And then have you guys advise us.
But a lot of times, it's been the little things, like changing the meeting time to five fifteen. And it's, no, this is the way we've always done it. You knew getting on this board, this was the time. If it doesn't work for you, you know, you're gonna have to get off. Well, things do change, you know, members change, and sometimes it doesn't always work for their schedule. So, it's those little things that I, I think that, for me, has just added up to where that kinda gets frustrating a little bit.
Okay, but ask the board here, if they decide, one of them wants to have a meeting at three o'clock, but the other people still are working, are you gonna change the whole board? That, that's the whole point of what, what we've talked about. I mean, we have to work, we, we can't just dissolve just because one of us doesn't like a rule. I mean, I'm sorry, but.
We'll buy this.
Yeah.
I know where there's a whole lot of dirt.
Sam, did you wanna talk to us?
Yeah, I know where there's a whole lot of dirt, if you need it. Whole lot. Call Randolph.
I actually like the parking garage.
Call Randolph.
Call Randolph. They took out that whole slew for their water table. It still doesn't work, hence the reason why I left Randolph. Um, they have so much, mountains. You can fill that whole area in. I'm not kidding. And they sell it really cheap a yard. I think it's like a buck something a yard. You're, you're just gonna have to find drivers, which that's gonna be the, probably the expensive thing. And if I had any input on your two architects, that second plan set was phenomenal.
Yeah.
Coming from a builder's mindset, wow.
Good job.
And I would use that bottom, like whoever said it, as like a transport garage and other things. But anyways, I'm hungry. I gotta go.
Bye.
Thank you.
I made a motion to go into executive session, um, for evaluation of manor administrator job performance.
Yeah.
Hi.